Welcome to the June 15th Select Board Meeting. Uh, please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, to protect public health during the COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are calling in via Zoom conference. This meeting is being live streamed and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast 98, Verizon 23, on Eastern's ECAT's website at www.easterncat.org, and is also being livestreamed on Facebook. Hold on one second Connor, I just lost my page when you did that, alright. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard, mblanchard@eastern.ma.us, or pose your, uh, pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Charles King.
Mark Lamb.
And Dot Phil Giannetti. Alright, first up on the agenda is a report on temporary outdoor dining permits issued since last, our last regular meeting. At our last meeting, we took a vote to allow the outdoor dining permits to go through an administrative process to make it faster and to make it more helpful to our businesses to be able to get up and running quickly. So, Michael, before you start, I just want to really thank the opening committee. Michael, you've done an amazing job at really managing all of that and keeping everything in order, and I want to thank you. I know that we had a lot of inquiries from businesses, and it's important, it was important to everyone on that board, as well as, um, you know, the administration and our board to be sure that we were really helpful and did everything we could to facilitate that. So thanks for all your work on that.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that, and I really do appreciate the work of the entire working group. Everyone's put in some long hours, there's been a lot of back and forth and emails, site inspections, and really, uh, people have been putting this as their first and highest priority, which is terrific. And so I do appreciate everybody's efforts. As Dottie mentioned, you adopt the, uh, policy at your last meeting. As part of that policy, there is a section, uh, that does stipulate that we, uh, the Town Administrator's Office, uh, provide you with a list of permits that have been issued since your last Select Board meeting. So just to give you a brief overview, um, since Tuesday morning, I guess, is when this went live following your meeting, we have received nine applications from Eastern Restaurants. Of those nine, six have been approved and issued. Those include McGuire's, the 99 Restaurant, Shovel Town Brewery, Corfino's, Porticello's, and the Union Villa. Uh, we have three applications that are extremely close to being approved, and I expect those to be issued, uh, probably within the next day, maybe two at the most.
Terrific.
Excellent, Michael. Thank you.
And it looks like everything's gone smooth for, for them. Um, I've seen pictures on social media of their dining areas, and it looks like they did that pretty quickly. Alright, um, next, the discussion and vote for a contract award on installation of a multi-zone heat pump system for Frothingham Hall. The contract would be awarded to Energy Source LLC.
Sure, would you like me to speak to that, Dottie?
Yeah, sorry.
That's fine. Is, uh, is my air conditioner in the background audible or annoying? Or is it fine?
Nope, it's fine.
Alright, great. So I could leave it on all night. Um, so item three and four are a series of contracts, both from the Director of Public Works, Dave Field, both associated with, uh, Eastern's participation in this Commonwealth's Green Communities Program, where we are eligible to receive grant funding for certain capital projects, uh, related to energy efficiencies and reducing our carbon footprint. Eastern was one of the first municipalities in Bristol County to take advantage of that program and join it back in 2010, I believe. Uh, and we have been very successful working with DPW in acquiring grant funds over 700,000 over the years from that program for a variety of, uh, energy efficiency projects, including these two. So, uh, they are both related to Frothingham Hall, which, as the board is aware, like most of our municipal buildings, is extraordinarily, um, uh, old, uh, I don't have a better way to dress that up, uh, and in need of some TLC. Uh, this gives us, uh, some funding for, uh, new multi-zone heating systems and weatherization, uh, and lighting upgrades, uh, to reduce our total utility spend and improve the efficiency of our community center. It's part of, I believe, a $150,000 grant award. We've now received, as I said, over 700,000 in grants through this program. We're in the top 20% of grant recipients in Massachusetts for, uh, our, uh, energy conservation efforts, and we've received so many grants through this that the Commonwealth's actually notified us that they're going to, uh, limit our winnings in the future to share, uh, frankly, with our neighbors. So, uh, Dave's done a great job on that, I'm very proud of it. I recommend award of both of these contracts. Happy to answer any questions about them.
So we, we might need to have an assumed name moving forward. I think that we're the first people, the first community that was, uh, that was mentioned in that. So if somebody would like to make a motion and a second for installation of a multi-zone heat pump system for, uh, Frothingham Hall awarded to Energy Source LLC?
So moved Craig Barger enthusiastically.
Second, Tom Brusart.
So that's Craig and Tom. Roll call vote on that?
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes. Great grant writing.
Lamb, yes.
Phil Giannetti, yes. And, uh, the same on the next memo for, uh, the weatherization and LED lighting upgrades also, uh, for Frothingham, um, to award that to Energy Source LLC.
So moved Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Brusart.
Craig and Tom, and a roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Phil Giannetti, yes. The next item on the agenda is a standing update for COVID response in Eastern. Connor?
Sure, so, um, I typically have a few kind of template slides that I, uh, shuffle through here that, um, I, there's outside of the increasing caseload in the United States, not a tremendous amount of, uh, new information to report. Uh, our efforts have really been focused on, um, the Phase 2 implications for us as far as restaurants, fields, uh, getting that information out to the community, uh, as well as our preparation for town meeting next week. Uh, so I don't have anything specifically, uh, new to add there. I'm happy to take any questions from the board on this topic, though. I thought that we would keep this on the agenda as it is a standing item.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Alright, well, it looks like overall the, the cases and the numbers are trending down still, so, um, everybody just needs to remember to keep following the hygiene rules and, and, uh, physical distancing and, you know, just masks and take care, and take care of, uh, that as you're out and about. Um, our next item up is a discussion and a possible vote for the reduction, the reduction of annual town meeting quorum. Connor?
Sure, so, um, the Commonwealth has been adopting a variety of emergency legislation throughout the duration of the COVID-19 State of Emergency, uh, to deal with a whole number of issues, including those that are specific, uh, and near and dear to municipal government. Uh, the most recent package was actually signed into law only one week ago, and part of that, and this was a long-awaited, uh, legislative package, part of that is allowing open town meeting forms of government like Eastern, uh, to reduce their quorum, um, to a number not less than 10% of normal. So our normal quorum in Eastern is 100 voters. You could reduce it to anything below that, to 10, provided that the Chair of Boards is in consultation with the Town Moderator, which I believe you have been, and you take a vote on that. That's been posted for at least a week, which this has been. And the intent there is to allow communities to, um, reduce the quorum so that the smaller number of folks show up due to concerns of being in a, uh, large gathering during the COVID, uh, pandemic, uh, depressed turnout, but you're still able to legislate and conduct the necessary business that you absolutely must, uh, to run the government. So, in anticipation of this, we have, uh, crafted a warrant that fits the standards. So if you do conduct a town meeting, uh, under this standard, you have to limit your warrant to financial, uh, articles only, which we've done. That's why our warrant is so, um, brief. Uh, again, the rationale there from the state's perspective on creating an efficient warrant, uh, in theory, so folks can come in, get logged in, uh, checked in, uh, safely, conduct their business and go home, um, without being there for six hours in a group of people. So, this legislative package is now available on a local level. Obviously, we've been working to create, uh, a safe and healthy environment for folks to feel comfortable going and exercising their right to vote. We're gonna have town meeting at Stone Hill again, I mean, in Sports Complex, which, under normal circumstances, could fit many thousand people in that building, but instead, this will allow us to fit, uh, a few hundred, even if everyone is spread out and at, at a minimum of six feet apart from one another, uh, in compliance with best practices on, uh, public health. So this is just one more tool in the toolkit, uh, to make it so that, uh, the town and its voters have options to safely engage with town meeting. And in order to effectuate it, you, at this point, would just need to have a discussion and a vote on if you wanted to reduce the quorum to a number specific, provided it's not less than 10. And for anyone watching who's new to town meeting, reducing the quorum does not reduce the maximum amount of people. It just reduces the minimum before you can call the meeting to order. Uh, so, under normal circumstances, our quorum is 100. You could have 2,000 people come and all participate. Uh, all that the quorum is, is the minimum number of participants. So if the board reduces that, that does not mean that any fewer people are allowed to participate.
So at our last meeting, um, we, you know, we're throwing around some different numbers, and I felt that 10, as the quorum, that's the lowest that we could go, uh, that I would support 10, because it doesn't mean, um, that we're gonna start a meeting fast with 10 people and get it over with in 15 minutes. It just means that, um, we won't get stuck on any quorum issues. And, uh, we usually, even when we reach quorum, if we have people that are out in the hall signing in, trying to get in, we usually wait until they're all in. So, um, I just thought that that was the easiest way to go, but I'm gonna go around to each of us in, in the order that we normally do, and hear everybody's perspective on that, and, uh, then we'll, we'll make a decision at the end. So Craig, what are your thoughts?
Well, number one, if, if the, if the Finance Committee and the Select Board are there, that's already more than 10 people. So I'm sort of trying to figure out, um, whether that, we should stick with 10, or we should go a, a little bit higher. Let me think about that for, for a few minutes and let other people comment, and, um, then I'll, then I'll put in my two cents.
Alright, Tom?
I think last time, I, I feel consistent with what I was speaking about last time. I think 50 is a, a safe number, uh, from a couple of aspects. One, both the pure physical safety, what we're trying to execute in the space that Stone Hill affords us. Um, and importantly, the queues that might happen, or the lines that might, uh, naturally form at any point, either outside or inside the facility. Uh, I feel less than that might jeopardize, uh, uh, hopefully, first of all, we have more, more than that, that we can safely accommodate as many as possible. That's the goal. I think that's the effort that, uh, Connor and team, uh, and all of us have, have put forth to try to make happen. So I hope more show. Uh, I would just wanna have a representative number of people present that, uh, hopefully reflected the community as a whole. And I feel 10 is just a number too small. Uh, I think Craig makes a good point that we will probably be over that, just given the number of committees, uh, and Select Board attending. Uh, and so I, I'm more a middle-of-the-road of 50. I, I definitely appreciate the reasoning for doing it, and I think 50 gives us a good, solid base to reflect the community's wishes.
Well, I don't think 50 represents the community either, if that is, is the logic on it. I guess I would say, what's the difference if it's 10 or 50?
I think it's more so. I think you're absolutely right, Dottie. If, uh, in an ideal world, it would be the 100. Cause that's what society and community and our bylaws have said would represent the majority at a minimum. Um, but it's balancing that particular legal law with trying to affect a safe execution. For me, I just happen to be at more than 10. And so hence where I, um, arrived at 50.
Alright, uh, Chuck, what are your thoughts?
I'm gonna not repeat what you all have already said. I, I like what Craig said, and I, I'm leaning more toward what Tom says. I had a figure in my head of about 35 to 50, up to 50.
Alright, Mark, what are your thoughts?
Uh, my thought is, I don't like moving quorum below 100, but desperate times call for desperate measures. To go to the extreme, 10, I'm not comfortable with that at all. To Tom's point, uh, 50 is, is a better representation of town meeting, uh, though it's not nearly enough. Again, uh, 100 would be ideal. But I look at something like this and I say, is the answer 10? Or is the answer to stay with 100? And like most things, the answer is usually down the middle. So I settle on 50, uh, with a little bit of discomfort, but, uh, 50 is, is the minimum that I would go.
Alright, Craig?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with, with, um, my colleagues. I would love to see, as, as Tom said, I would love to see a, a large turnout of people, um, with a, with a larger representation of our community. But I, I could live with 50, um, um, as the, as the quorum number.
So could I.
Alright, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Brusart.
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Phil Giannetti, yes. Alright, next is...
Dottie, I do, there was one question about, um, the town meeting.
Hold on one second. Oh, you mean in the Q&amp;A? Sorry, I thought I missed something on there. Andrew Abramson of 4 Flint Lane is asking, will the doors be open the whole time to keep air ventilated in the space?
So, it's a good question. We're doing a walkthrough this week, uh, to look at that, and one of the items is, uh, working out either forced air ventilation or through doors. So that's something we're working on in Public Works and Stone Hill Facilities this week. Something I, I just threw up on screen while the board was deliberating, uh, is something that we, uh, published today. It's the standard know-before-you-go guide that, uh, explains where town meeting is, why it's there, what the warrant is, what, uh, folks need to do, uh, to participate. Bring a, a face covering, uh, an ID in case you're a inactive voter who has not returned your census. Reminders about social distancing. We'll have signage and floor markers and all of those types of things, sort of like a grocery store, frankly, and, uh, virus guards, so people can keep their distance from one another. Um, and we'll have staff on hand to be assisting people, certain team members assisting people. Uh, and the backside of this also has a campus map, just like we did last year for folks. Uh, if you haven't been on, on campus at Stone Hill, this will, uh, show you, uh, where you have to get, uh, to go participate. So this is online now. It's on our social media accounts. I encourage folks to share with people who want to turn out, um, so.
Connor, I, I think, um, it's important that family members can sit together, is that correct? And that just non-family members must be six feet apart or eight feet apart?
So, that's consistent with, um, guidance that's been issued, I believe, from the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office regarding elections in general, that obviously if you have folks, numerous voters who live in one house, who are already by virtue of living together, not, uh, having to social distance, you can come together, uh, in a, in a cluster. And we will have, uh, numerous, uh, types of seat, uh, spacing. So we'll have a lot of single seats spaced six feet apart. We'll also have some doubles, uh, and extra chairs for folks who come in larger family units, so that people who come from one household can be together. So yes, if you're coming with your family, uh, you do not need to be six feet apart. But you need to be six feet away from everyone else.
And it's worth noting that our moderator, Kate Welch, is part of a moderators' group, um, throughout the state, and they've been talking about this from their perspective on the safest way to conduct a town meeting. Um, I know that Danielle, our, our town clerk, has also been working on that. Connor, I have been on different, uh, webinars and calls with the Mass Municipal Association, so, um, these really are the top, uh, ways to conduct a safe town meeting that other, other towns are doing, um, unless they are having them outside. That's a whole different other version. And then, of course, towns with representative town meeting can do Zoom meetings. So I think it looks like we've covered everything. Again, this is the, the first time we've had a town meeting under these conditions. So we ask that people just be patient when they get there and when they're checking in, um, and getting their seat. So, um, we hope to see everybody there next Monday at 7 o'clock. The next item that we have is, um, discussion of the Town Administrator's Fiscal 2021 Change Budget Memo, number four.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So, uh, tonight I'm going to walk through. I have a presentation, so it's not just, uh, folks having to listen, uh, to me talk with no visual aids the whole time. I didn't want to subject everyone to that. Um, but I am, due to the importance of this topic, the level of attention that it's getting, I am going to go through the memo, uh, that I provided you in, in a good level of detail, uh, so that we can get folks the information that they need, uh, throughout this presentation. So, let me just get this moving. So, the fourth change memo, this is now, uh, I think the third one in three weeks, the fourth one since mid-May. Uh, and the changes made of preliminary budget, uh, including the ones made since last week, bring the outstanding budget deficit of $336,000 down to about $208,572. The only changes we've made since last week are on the Town Department's side. Specifically, we've further reduced town budgets by $154,490. It results in a fiscal 21 budget for our municipal departments that is below, uh, fiscal 20 levels. Uh, because our budgets are being cut, uh, below their current, uh, level fund through a combination of, uh, position eliminations, including new ones that I'll touch on tonight, wage concessions and other operating cuts. I'm not recommending any further cuts to our municipal departments at this time. So here's just a kind of summary of what we're gonna touch on. We're gonna start with a big picture and work our way down, uh, to the local level tonight. So the general economic outlook, uh, is not good. It has not been good, and it, uh, remains quite poor. There's no significant new information from, uh, state or federal legislators on, uh, targeted municipal or local educational financial support, uh, outside of the items we've touched on. The unemployment rate in the United States, uh, continues, uh, to be catastrophically high. It's at 13.3%, that reflects 21 million Americans out of work on a continuing basis. An additional one and a half million folks filed first-time unemployment claims last week. The United States Federal Reserve, uh, last week, uh, issued a projection that unemployment in the United States will remain high at about 9.5% by the end of this calendar year. Uh, that unemployment outlook is, uh, comparatively optimistic, uh, compared to the Congressional Budget Offices in Trump 2020-2021 Outlook, which estimates that national unemployment is going to average 11.5% this calendar year and 9.3% for 2021. The Fed's 2020 GDP outlook, uh, has been revised to, uh, a contraction of 6.5% and that's actually worse than the Congressional Budget Office. Also negative estimate of 5.6% contraction. Neither the CBO or the Fed are projecting that US economic output is going to recover to pre-recession levels until calendar year 2022. These, uh, statistics sometimes feel kind of, uh, remote from our tasks at hand here and what we're doing in local government. Uh, but they're not, um, they're not, they're not conceptual, they're real, and they're here in Eastern. And actually, in Massachusetts and in Eastern, unemployment is worse than it is on the national level. Massachusetts was one of the harder-hit states by the coronavirus pandemic. Uh, according to the Pioneer Institute, unemployment in Eastern, uh, as of May 30th is 19.5%. I cannot stress enough how, uh, appallingly bad that is. Uh, before the coronavirus, uh, hit, unemployment in Eastern was about 2%. So, in addition to the, the isolation, the stress and, and, uh, the physical illness brought on by COVID, there's, there's very real economic challenge facing our community. Taking it down to the state level from national, um, May tax collections for the Commonwealth are in. They've been tallied, and the newest update is that the Commonwealth expects to fall $2.25 billion short uh, of their budgeted expectations for the current fiscal year that ends in only two weeks. Current economist estimates for the Commonwealth's total revenue shortfall next year, the year that we're trying to put a budget together for, are $6 billion. Uh, some estimating as high as $8 billion. Uh, that's 19 to 25% below what the expectation on tax revenue for the Commonwealth was in January. The state legislature will not propose a, a fiscal 21 budget before that year begins, and so we have to rely on these catastrophically bad forecasts to make assumptions about what our state revenue will look like next year. So, getting into Eastern's budget, uh, and our revenue, we're now one week away from town meeting, a town meeting that's already delayed by more than a month. Uh, and we're facing an economic disaster, uh, that is the worst, uh, by many measures since the Great Depression. But it's important that the board and folks tuning into this, all of our leaders in town, remember, um, as immediate and pressing and novel as these challenges immediately in front of us feel, this is, uh, the latest, uh, iteration of a, uh, structural problem that we have been dealing with as a community for many, many years. We've had a structural revenue deficit in this community, uh, for at least 12 years, for more than a decade, uh, because of a consistent, well-documented, uh, frequently discussed state revenue shortfall that occurred in the last recession in 2008, that took eight years to recover from. In a community that has, uh, a extraordinarily sparse history of operational overrides to address that deficit, including most recently in 2016, when voters rejected that proposition by a two-to-one margin. It's also important that we remember, um, that these challenges have not been, uh, happening out of view, uh, or without significant, uh, conversation, uh, from all of us, asking folks to engage and, and, and pay attention to these things, because we knew that we would eventually hit another recession, that we would not be in a position of strength to weather it, uh, and to support our municipal or educational services at a level that we ought to heading into the future. So, this graph shows, um, what our history of having to rely on one-time money, free cash and stabilization funds in our operating budget has been since that revenue deficit began. So, if you look, starting on the left, in 2007, that was the last time there was an operational override in the town. And it's not a coincidence that the reliance on reserves that year was effectively zero, and same for the year immediately after that. In 2009, cuts to state aid to Eastern began, and you can see that almost immediately, we had to start relying on, uh, our reserve funds, and that never stopped. It took until 2017 for our revenue from the state to surpass that 2008 level, not even adjusting for inflation. If you adjust for inflation, we never recovered. And in that same time, voters rejected, uh, an override that was put forward specifically, um, to support, uh, the existing service levels of the Eastern Public Schools and of town departments. Uh, and that was rejected overwhelmingly. And since then, we have been trying to cut our reliance on reserve funds in order to build our reserve stores back up in anticipation of a recession, that we are unfortunately now hitting, uh, the worst one, uh, by current outlooks in a very, very, very long time. So this ties into, and is relevant to the discussion about our 21 budget, because it, it informs what we're projecting for state aid. So state aid to Eastern, uh, has been and continues to be our second-largest source of revenue behind only taxation and size and importance. We're estimating it at about $11,862,000 next year, which is a reduction of about a million... which is a reduction of about a million dollars from the current year, which is eight and a quarter percent. Given current economic outlooks, some of which I just touched on, that the Commonwealth is looking at figures that are between 19 and 25% shortfalls on their revenue. This estimate may prove to be optimistic. I hope that that's not the case, but if it is, then we are going to need to cut budgets deeper or use even more reserve funds in the fall. We have the benefit of education from history that we know in the last recession, which you could see on the left turn, the left side of this, there was instead of one dramatic cut, there was a series of cuts over years between 2009 and 12 before bottoming out and starting to grow again. The only reason why that cut was not more precipitous was because there was a $1 million payment to the town through the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, at that time known as the stimulus package under the Obama administration. We are not anticipating any such relief currently. We know that it took two years for private sector growth to recur in that last recession and that it took five years for state tax revenue to recover and it took eight years for our revenue to recover. So when we're thinking about the coming fiscal year, as difficult as this process has been, we should fully expect that this will not be a one-year problem. Balancing the budget a week from now is not going to fix the structural issue. None of this is being pointed out again tonight to point fingers at the Commonwealth because they, like us, have to balance their budgets to align their expense expectations with revenue. Unlike the federal government, neither of us can deficit spend. So we can't kind of rely on that when things are difficult, no matter what, we need to line our expenses up with our revenue. Then the Commonwealth's revenue portfolio is arguably even more sensitive to broader economic woes than ours because they are largely driven by consumption-based and income taxation where we are largely driven by property tax. I'm including this here because there's going to be really difficult decisions that need to be made by the select board, the school committee, the finance committee, and the voters at town meeting in the coming week. The temptation to fix the remaining deficit of 200,000 and change through last-minute cuts is going to be real. However, none of that will fix or address the deeper and underlying issue of having a structural revenue deficit, nor will punitive cuts change the reality that all of our departments are underfunded, including the schools, including all town departments. Currently and historically, not as a function of overspending in one area versus another, but by a function of the fact that the recurring revenue we have has just simply been inadequate for more than a decade. And that the mechanisms for addressing that are quite limited. The longer-term ones involve infrastructure investment and zoning changes, and we have worked aggressively on that. And the short-term ones are overrides, which people have elected not to pursue. So in summary, we have other revenue categories here. All of them are shown on screen. Taxation is projected to increase by about 2.4 million. That includes new growth, about 4% to a total of $61,215,696. That's the only area of revenue that we're projecting an increase. That's levying to the maximum limit allowed by law. We cannot increase the tax levy any further without an override. Local receipts are projected to decrease by about 557,000, which is a cut of about seven and a half percent. Those revenue categories include things like excise tax, which are obviously closely tied, excise and meals tax, which are closely tied to overall economic health. Other revenues you see here at 2.5 million, that includes 1.4 million in reserve use. That's projected at 2.5 million total. So what we're looking at in total for our general fund revenue is a projection of 82,447,000. It's just shy of 1% over our current fiscal 20 budget levels. So moving into the expense side. As we noted back on May 18th, which was when we issued the first post coronavirus budget, the economic crisis facing the community due to this recession was going to necessitate really brutal cuts to all of our departments. Not because those are desirable from a programmatic standpoint, they're not, no one disputes that, we all agree on that. But because of the revenue issues I just touched on, that we simply are too lean and our margins are too thin and to withstand a major unplanned revenue drop and not have it hurt our operational capacity. On the town side, three unions and all non-union personnel, which represents about half of our total labor force, took complete wage freezes. And those who participated in that gave back more, an average of more than $2,000 in wages per employee to help reduce the total number of positions that the town government needed to cut and to reduce our budget. However, despite that, then just the, given the size of the deficit, we still had to make cuts. And last week, we noted reductions and reorganizations in the Department of Municipal Finance, Inspeccional Services and Health and Community Services. And this week we have more and they are noted here. So the police, the police department will be eliminating a full-time patrol officer position. Expenses, including overtime, are being significantly reduced. This week's reduction, and that's important, the reductions this week, total 118,601. That is coupled with previous reductions that had already been made to the police department request and previous memos. So in total, the 2021 Police Department budget has been reduced by $199,954 from its initial budget request. That leaves the department at a level fund, $4,372,000, a 0% increase over the current fiscal year. This is a deeply regressive budget for the department as all of our departments are unfortunately having to weather as a result of the recession. We have also made adjustments to the fire department. So the town of Easton was fortunate years ago to win a grant from the federal government called Safer Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. That provided a significant federal grant funding to cover the super majority of the cost to hire four additional firefighters. One of the qualifications for participating in that program is that you are understaffed, which the fire department, like all of our departments, is. So we, that was a huge help to the community. We were able to win that grant. And one of the members of the select board, and I think one of the current members who was on the finance committee, asked a pointed but important question those three years ago, which is what happens when the grant period expires? If our revenue is in a bad way or we're having trouble? And we said, we'll have to start attritioning those positions out and we hope we won't have to do that. Unfortunately, we're in a heinous economic crisis and so that is what we will be doing. And so we will be attritioning out one of those positions once that grant expires this fiscal year. That will reduce the department budget by $35,889, coupled with other reductions to the department in prior memos. The fire budget's been reduced by a total of 89,948 from its initial request. This leaves the fire and ambulance department at 4.93 million for fiscal 21. That's an increase of 190,000 over its current level. So summarizing what we've done on the town government side since mid-May, we, these two departments that I just mentioned, add or subtract more accurately, $154,490 from town department spending since the last memo. That gets added to 399,000 that we've already cut. So we have a total reduction of 554,000 to the town departments since mid-May, at which point our budget was just shy of $18 million. Just to give a summary of what we did, we reduced our department budgets by 554,000 through position eliminations, department reorganizations, and significant employee wage freezes that I touched on. Specifically, those wage freezes that I mentioned before totaled about $170,000, which is roughly equivalent to a full percentage point of running our government operations for a year. I can't praise those folks enough for their volunteering to help in that way.
Connor, can I just interject one second? I just want to clarify on that, that that was in addition to the three-year collective bargaining agreement that we had, which we're in the middle of that contract. And many of those contracts, they had taken a wage freeze in one of those years also.
Yeah. So to be, to be clear, there was not a complete wage freeze in the first year, but there was no cost of living adjustment. So usually when people talk about wages, there are two different types. At a minimum, you would talk about cost of living, which is basically a cross-the-board adjustment to the salary plan for an entire unit. Those are usually negotiated. They're based on market data and a variety of other things. And then there's steps for years of service or performance. And so with the exception of one town union, all town unions took a zero cost of living in the first year of their three-year contract period that we're currently in. So fiscal 19, 20, and 21, we're heading into the final year. Seven out of eight of our unions took a zero in that first year already. Some of the folks who are giving all wage increases back next year are now going to have a three-year contract period in which they've received 2% cost of living, which is incredibly lean, frankly, but yes, that is accurate. Other steps that we've taken.
Different way. So I think what, I apologize, I just want to clarify, make sure I understand it correctly. So if they take a zero increase in the first year, a 2% increase in the second year, and then a zero increase the third year, that's what we're saying, right? That it's basically like, instead of getting a, everybody loosely talks about a two or three or four percent raise every year, they've gotten zero twice. So it's like 0.66% if you took the 2% divided up by three year. And I won't get out, I won't get into the whole compound impact of increase year over year. That makes sense?
Yes, that's, that's accurate for the cost of living for many, about half of our workforce.
You put in good work.
They do.
That's half of the town workforce, correct?
Correct.
Town side, okay.
Correct. So other steps that we are implementing in this budget to reduce town spending, we're reorganizing or sorry, regionalizing municipal dispatch. And we are going to dissolve the municipal dispatch department this fiscal year. We eliminated clerical and administrative positions in a variety of departments, including health and community services, inspectional services, and municipal finance. The net, and, and tonight we announced that we'll be eliminating, reducing positions in police and fire. The net result of this is that we are reducing our workforce by nine and a half FTE, that's full-time equivalent positions. That's equal to 5.6% of our total workforce. The town government workforce of all of our departments, police, fire, public works, every one of the town offices in Frothingham Hall, we employ 169 full-time equivalents. And so we are shedding over 5% of that in the coming fiscal year. And the result there is that we will be contracting, our, our town department budgets will be decreasing by 47,000 below their current year level. So it's a contraction of just over a quarter of a percent.
Connor, specific to the numbers that you just said, we did have a question and I'm going to entertain this just because it's so close to what you had. Timothy Webster from Lothar Street asked, does the one full-time equivalent from police come from the currently open spot? Or is it another reduction?
Yeah, it's, it's a vacancy that we did not fill that will be reduced.
Great, thank you.
Connor, how is the Veterans Office faring in the midst of that health and community services?
So that's a good question and that's why I did, I added this slide to speak a little bit more specifically about that department because we have received a few questions about it and I wanted to clarify a few things. The Director of Health is also on this call if there are questions later. But, but one of the principles that was laid out back on May 18th for, you know, back, we knew back then, the deficit was almost two and a half million. We knew that every single department was going to have to cut. None of us were going to like it and now we are going, we're basically in the business of making the least painful and least bad choice, not in the business of not causing pain, unfortunately, because we just don't have the revenue to support that. So what we look at options to make sure that we can reduce personnel where we can and preserve certain critical functions. And in the case of health and community services, we reduced administrative and customer service-based support, which will not go unnoticed. There will be decreases in services for permitting, for business responsiveness. But we prioritized two main things. One is health, public health. We are fully aware that we're in a pandemic. We've all worked effectively every single day since February. It would be impossible for that reality to escape our awareness if we wanted it to. And two is positions that support vulnerable populations because that does not make sense to cut things that support people with medical needs or financial challenges during a horrible economic recession. And so what we did was that the outreach coordinator position was vacated. And that position has a mix of functions related to programmatic support for financial assistance as well as a community program support for members of the community, Meals on Wheels, things like that. So that position was vacated and we absorbed and reorganized the department so that the community programming responsibilities will be absorbed by a new deputy director of health and community services for community programs. That position was formerly the Recreation Director for a variety of coronavirus and public health-based reasons. Recreation obviously has been functionally closed this spring and it's going to be limited over the summer. And so we are making use of that existing resource to consolidate community programming and recreation because really something that the Department of Health and Community Services has been working on for many years through its mission is to break down different departmental silos and find areas where there's a commonality of mission. That makes sense and that's one of them. So also the financial assistance and benefit eligibility duties, things relating to SNAP benefits, connecting folks up with Shine Counselor for tax assistance, that's going to be absorbed by a new Deputy Director of Health and Community Services for veterans and financial affairs. That's formerly, the title is formerly just the Veteran Services Officer. Again, the VSO position by law provides assistance to veterans for all, not any number of programs, but particularly for a lot of programs that relate to financial eligibility and getting direct financial assistance through what's called the Chapter 115 program in the Commonwealth to help folks make ends meet. So again, there's a lot of commonality between the current responsibilities of that position and broadening that to include financial, financial and income-based programs on the municipal, state, federal, and nonprofit level. And we are benefited as we are in so many ways with two really great incumbents who are going to be able to do a great job there. Redistributing those responsibilities also adds a huge benefit. That's been a priority for, the select board has been a priority for me in my role as town administrator, is creating a chain of command in a formalized management structure within our departments for basically business resiliency. Right now, Health and Community Services is one of our largest municipal departments outside of police, fire, and public works. And we have one director who is always remarkably busy, but has been doubly so during times of coronavirus. So by creating these deputy positions focused on multidisciplinary areas that fall under Health and Community Services responsibilities already, this allows the Director of Health and Community Services to more formally and adequately assign day-to-day functions relating to recreation, council on aging, veteran services to those deputies at Frothingham Hall to provide the director with more flexibility to really focus on what Director Kennedy has been focusing on so much so, which is public health, which is another department within her control. And that's going to be really important because in addition to COVID, we're probably heading into another triple E season and any number of other health-related things that Director Kennedy will certainly benefit from having that chain of command and folks who can run day-to-day on other aspects of her span of control. Finally, we eliminated, as I mentioned before, customer service-focused a position that was shared with the building department. Core functions of that relate to permitting, buildings, things like that. We will take advantage of E permitting more so than we already have. One thing that we've been able to learn through this crisis is that you can remotely provide a lot of municipal services and other essential customer-based support will be redistributed among existing personnel. But as we laid out back on May 18th, not reducing health inspector positions or hours. not reducing health inspector positions or hours. To the contrary, we have been doing lots of overtime with those folks funded through CARES funding. We're not reducing the director's ability to manage health related concerns. If anything, we're reorganizing existing functions in a way that creates a structure that allows the director to more so focus on health in the immediate term while that is such a pressing issue. So in total, the town has now arrived at a budget that's below its current fiscal twenty levels. Concurrent to our process, the School Committee and the Superintendent have their own concurrent budget process. They've been working diligently on the difficult tasks, just like we have, to reduce their budget for next year to the fullest extent that they can. Again, not because this is something any of us want from a programmatic perspective, but because we're facing a revenue crisis. And so here is a summary of where we are. School budget is currently, as it was voted last week, at forty two million, six hundred and thirty three thousand, nine hundred and fifty two. It's an increase of point six four percent over current fiscal twenty funding levels. Outside of our department spending, we have basically other expenses and fixed costs. Those are certain categories of expense that we don't have a tremendous amount of immediate control over. It includes premiums for health insurance for town and school employees and retirees, includes pension assessments, debt service on capital projects, whether they be roads or school buildings or sewers, as well as assessments from the state and county governments. So in addition to receiving revenue from a Commonwealth, we also have to pay bills to them, including particularly notably lately charter school assessments. So fixed costs unfortunately have not changed. They are projected at twenty two million, six hundred thirty five thousand, six hundred and two. That's an increase of just under four percent over current budget levels. So really the only area on the revenue side, the only category that has any growth is taxation. Everything else and and reserve use, everything else is negative. And on the expense side, town departments are contracting, the school budget is marginally barely increasing at this point. And the only thing that's really growing are fixed costs, including those regional assessments that we don't have control over. So the net is that we end up with a total projected expense level of eighty two million, six hundred fifty six thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars. It's just about a million dollars over current level, one point three three percent. However, and even though that's a really, really, really modest increase over current levels, it is slightly above the even more meager revenue projection increase. We're still left right now, a week from town meeting, we have a projected deficit of two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventy two dollars. And on screen you see the projections for all revenue types as well as expense types, including any changes since last week, which again is limited to reducing police and fire. So the recession and the expected revenue shortfalls for next year forced the production of what is a brutally difficult budget for town and school departments. The fact that we're a week away from town meeting and we still have not balanced it speaks truth to the pain that's being wrought by this crisis. There remain only a few options for closing the rest of this gap. Much like all the decisions we've all had to make so far, none of the remaining options are particularly desirable, nor are any of them frankly, in the long term financial or programmatic interest of our community or employees. Nonetheless, it's the law that we have to balance a budget. And so the options remaining to get rid of that last two hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit are up on the screen here. One, we can cut town budgets further below zero. Two, if the School Committee wishes, they could reduce their budget further. Three is that unions could make additional wage concessions. Again, if they volunteer to. Four is the application of additional reserve funds dollars. So we're already planning to expend about thirty percent of our four point six million reserves on hand, which is just over one point four million. Applying additional reserve funds may prove to be the least bad of these options. But doing so, it doesn't come without cost or risk. Again, the current projections, which hopefully pan out to be overly negative for the Commonwealth or that they may fall nineteen to twenty five percent short and we're currently projecting an eight percent shortfall in our revenue from them. We've been in constant contact with our delegation. They understand fully how critical Chapter seventy education funding and unrestricted general government funding from the state is not just for Easton, but for all three hundred and fifty one cities and towns in Massachusetts, but they are going to have to balance their budget. We don't know when that is either. So there's a lot of unknowns there. So applying additional reserve funds, you know, you could, we could apply another two hundred thousand of free cash or stabilization that would balance a budget. But there, if we need to, if our current assessments prove to be too optimistic, then that's just going to be kind of a higher plateau from which we need to cut from.
And there's also a lot of unknowns when school starts, what kind of anticipated costs that we might not even know about yet could could come up.
Correct. I think I won't speak for the Superintendent, but obviously we communicate almost daily and none of this. Balancing the budget next week as as difficult as that's going to be, is not going to be the end of this process for any of us. It's going to be a really, really, really long and really challenging journey for for all of us and particularly the schools, schools. You know, the current standards that are being floated are not going to be easy to implement. And, you know, we can all be very hardworking, we can all be very creative and very diligent. But the reality is that changing things and doing things costs money and we don't have any. So we deliberately did not request a majority of our CARES funding in this current round, leaving the large majority of that in the tank, so to speak, because we 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 can expect that the standards that schools need to adopt to are going to be unlike anything they've seen. So we're trying to reserve that capacity and hopefully the funding eligibility is there or the federal government loosens the restrictions on that funding so it can be used to more generally support our spending. So, you know, one of the one other option that's not here or first of all, none of these are mutually exclusive, right? It can be a combination of things to close the gap. In in all cases, you know, the Select Board should be weighing in tonight on some preferences. I believe the School Committee is meeting this week. They should be giving some preference as well. If none of these options are agreeable to our elected leaders and the deficit can't be reduced by mutual agreement, the town could bring an unbalanced budget to town meeting. Doing so is in contravention to the spirit of our charter, which very, very, in a very, very detailed and thoughtful way, lays out the process for the production of a budget in advance of town meeting. And it would also frankly, just be in contravention of of all good financial management practice for an organization. Budget is over eighty million dollars and who employ more than eight hundred people to serve twenty five thousand people. So I recommend that everything is done to avoid that. As we just touched on balancing the budget, this is not going to be the last step for you, for the community, for the schools. As difficult as it's going to be, we're going to need to keep working together to keep finding a path forward with a lot more unknowns in front of us than knowns. We're not going to be able to accomplish fixing structural problems that we have like a minimum of a one million dollar shortfall on our revenue side that we have known about and drawn attention to every single year. That is not going to be fixed. With last minute budget cuts and moves from one area to another, that revenue deficit existed before COVID and it's going to exist after. And unfortunately, it will by all accounts just be worsened. You know, COVID nineteen is still with us. Thankfully, there's a lot of data trending in the right direction for the Commonwealth. But it's going to have remarkable challenges for all of us, including and in particular schools, how we are meant to manage safely to provide services, not only just in the fall, but on a on a go forward basis. So even once we get through this, once we finish this last really difficult stretch of getting this budget balanced, you know, the community needs to engage on the conversation that many on the board have talked about. About this revenue shortfall that we have had, about the predictably bad, long term implications of repeatedly underfunding services across all of our departments and whether continuing to avoid operational overrides indefinitely are is worth that cost. So that's what I have prepared. I'm happy to take questions from the board.
Honor, I just, it's Craig Barger. I had an occasion to sit in on a conference call with the Chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee last week. And they were talking first about the fiscal twenty situation of two point five billion dollars in lot in revenue below what they anticipated in January. And number one, they were looking at utilizing the any capital gains money that comes into the Commonwealth was usually put into the stabilization account. They're going to use that to reduce the deficit. They also were encouraging that they have been having conversations with Senators Markey and Warren regarding the CARES Act money. And and as you indicated, loosening the strings on that money so that towns and cities could use that for non COVID nineteen expenses, i.e. reducing our deficit and increasing our revenue. So we're, I'm hopeful that that with their help and with the community's help, reaching out to Senators Markey and Warren, that we will get movement on that front. Not to mention the possibility of an additional CARES Act or Stabilization Act, or whatever they want to call it, that will allow for additional monies in fiscal twenty one coming from the federal government to the Commonwealth and then to cities and towns like Easton to help us with lost revenue. Because let's face it, we can't deficit spend, but the federal government can and does and will. And and I think it's important that people reach out to our senators regarding that to encourage them to help us through this crisis. I I'm sure I'm going to have more to say, but that's something that 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 I was, I wanted people to be aware of.
Thanks, Craig. Tom?
I I appreciate the presentation, Connor. I truly do. And I want to start by recognizing your credit to the efforts that you and all of us are going through, the School Committee and certainly the School Superintendent are going through. I keenly am appreciative of the fact that we talk about generalities in terms of impacts to service or impacts to our ability to educate our youth. But it is very important that I know we all recognize that behind those generalities are specific faces and people that are being impacted by the decisions and the process that we're going through. And so that's not lost upon you, that there are people behind those generalities. I I want to say thank you in advance for listening to some of the points that I make. You've just sat through a long financial presentation. As somebody who lives this every day, I know it's all worthwhile. I have a few points that I wanted to highlight, Connor, of what you mentioned. And feel free to scroll through the slides if you would like. But back on the revenue slide, one of the aspects that I think is very important, and I'm specifically referencing this year twenty twenties budget book, which again, for anybody that has questions about the budget, this book has won awards for recognition for its comprehensiveness. And that is a good foundation for you to understand all of the history or recent history that goes into what we're talking about today. Because we're really not talking about a challenge that arose today to Connor's point. We are unpacking years, in some cases, of decisions that have resulted in financial consequences that have brought us to this point. Pandemic aside, and as the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, I was appreciative of the opportunity to present to fellow Select Board members in the community at whole, exactly the structural revenue deficit that we have talked about for years. And candidly, we were poised to make a recommendation before the pandemic of recommending an operational override to provide the level of services and monetary support for those services and the support for the education that we wanted to see are being provided in our community. So that the pandemic hit just before that presentation doesn't take away its validity. It simply says that it would be a challenge on the taxpayer perhaps that we are very conscious and consider though, but the need is still there. I do want to point out to my fellow Select Board members and to the audience at large that although we have a revenue challenge now, and I am heartened by Select Board Member Barger's comments about the potential for some relief next year, I personally do not think it is adequate enough for us to be out of the woods by any stretch. And I do not, and I do not mean that he inferred that. The new growth history that we saw before the Great Depression back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, our new growth as a town was six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars in two thousand six, just shy of that, and just over a million dollars in two thousand seven. By two thousand nine, new growth had plummeted to four hundred thousand dollars and stayed below four hundred thousand dollars for the three years after that. And so I just want to point out that from a new growth perspective, if we are facing the economic consequences that seem to be present for us now, that there is a good likelihood that we will not see new revenue growth for the foreseeable future. And that's concerning. It makes me concerned about our revenues for the future. Next item, back to another point on revenue is just along the lines of state aid. When we saw the last time that this happened back in two thousand eight, we didn't actually bottom out in terms of the pure dollars of impact. And it's concerning if that is in any way, again, something that impacts us now. That means that the fiscal year twenty twenty one estimate that you see there just north of ten point five million, if not before. And so that coupled with new growth challenge gives me considerable concern that for the foreseeable future, in the next few years, we don't have a revenue source that can meaningfully change our trajectory of where we're at. That we basically are dependent upon taxation. We are capped from a taxation growth by law, two and a half percent. That being our largest amount of growth, that is something that is concerning to me, that our revenue challenge is not now, but it is something that is going to be present for years and quite frankly, could continue to deteriorate. Those factors give me pause about the use of reserve funds. I I, as I mentioned before, support the reserve funds that we have currently in our budget. But because of the potential for decreased revenue in the years to come in state aid and new growth, gives me concern about using more. On the expense side, I do want to point out some information that was provided to the Budget Subcommittee, if that's okay. And I just want to emphasize, and again, these documents are all available on the town website. The Budget Subcommittee met numerous times over the winter with great frequency in preparation for our recommendation to the town joint meetings of Finance Committee and Select Board that we normally would be holding to recommend an operational override be pursued because we recognized that we had a revenue, structural revenue problem and that we were continuously being challenged to solve that problem from the expense side of the equation. As a matter of fact, when we looked at expenditure per capita and the difference between ourselves and our comparable pair communities, in two thousand fourteen, we spent nine percent less per capita. And in two thousand seventeen, we spent thirteen percent less per capita. And in two thousand eighteen, and twenty percent less per capita. So we have regularly showed a demonstrated trend of less expense per capita. When you ask what that is across, it is across all what I would call the major drivers of the important community services and schooling category. Every one, not just one. I'll start with the fact that our DPW are was twenty two percent per capita below our core group and seven percent below our neighboring group. Our fire department was fifteen percent below our core group per capita spend and twenty six percent below our neighbors. Our police department is twenty percent below per capita and thirty four percent below per capita, the core group and neighboring communities respectively. Our police department is twenty percent below per capita and thirty-four percent below per capita, the core group and neighboring communities uh respectively. Our general government, so town hall and in the life, forty-seven percent below per capita, our core group, and twenty-four percent below our neighboring communities. And I think in in terms of how, what demonstrates our values, um, um, and certainly not at the uh expense of those other very important and critical town services, our education per capita spend is eight percent below our core group and three percent below our neighbors. And although this is a per capita spend, if you look at per pupil spend, we are also materially below advantage from a expense or expenditure perspective. And the aggregate of all those, again, bring us back to a total spend below our core group of comparison by twenty percent. And for those that find what the core group is, that is an approved group of communities that best matches Eastern characteristics that we embody. And that was part of uh an operational audit that was completed uh several years ago, I believe in two thousand sixteen, and we have continued to track. I won't go into all of the comparisons, but there is a tremendous amount of information that the community, certainly my fellow Select Board members and people on this call, can avail themselves of. Um, I think if in perspective, the fundamental challenges from an expense side, we have been undergoing for many years. Um, I think they also reflect in part, the values that our society has placed and the efforts we have tried to be lean and allocate our precious resources of revenues as best as possible. Uh, so those are the the key points that I just wanted to uh bring up. Again, I'll end the same way I began with just a tremendous amount of credit to the leaders in our town. I believe there is still work to be done. But that the issues and the topics that are being debated and discussed actually at its lowest common denominator have faces and names to them and people are being impacted. Um, and I appreciate the difficulty of this discussion. And I just want to thank everybody for their continued effort in helping us get to the best place uh possible in a very, very difficult situation in time. Uh, thank you, Dottie and Select Board for indulging me in some of those information. And if there are any questions on any of those.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Chuck?
Thank you, Dot, and uh thank you. I, Tom, I can't presume to compete with your budgetary analysis. It was an excellent job. I will say on my own behalf and thinking about this and listening to Connor is that when I look at the four choices for eliminating the deficit, one has to feel, and I I'm sure Connor has, and I'm sure that Superintendent Cabral has as well on the school side. There are further cuts to town budgets, further cuts to school budget, additional wage concessions from labor, additional application of re- reserve funds. I can't look at, I I can't look at this without wondering, where do we go from here? But I do see, I am encouraged by uh the work of our um town administrator and of our uh school superintendent, because Connor has given a good presentation and answered a question of mine regarding the reorganization of uh health and community programming. And I've also seen from uh Superintendent Cabral and listening to her to the school committee meeting of a few days ago, uh, how creative they're trying to be in terms of the schools. It's like the old story about trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. How do you have enough teachers to teach a class size that's got to be about half the size as it was before? Uh, but she's being creative and her staff and committees in terms of trying even figuring out, depending on what's going to happen in the fall and the spring, of some kind of combination of physical space and continued remote learning from home. So I I am encouraged by the creativity, but we need more of it. I am amazed at the unemployment rate in our town. I mean, when I picture it, and I think that it's, here's the typical family of a married couple and two kids. And here, at least one of the at least one spouse is is without a job now, taking care of kids. It's it's amazing to me. So what I'm saying too is that as we approach town meeting, all of us, we know, are getting squeezed in one form or another. And certainly in the in the town and all the aspects of town, we certainly are as well. So we have to, we have to all realize that when we're um facing these budgets coming up tonight and into the town meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Mark?
Hello, Donnie. Um, that was quite a presentation. Looking at this slide right now, and I'm looking at the four options and looking at uh two hundred and eight thousand dollars to close uh to bring about a balanced budget to town meeting. I think that is our job to bring a balanced budget to town meeting. I take no pleasure in saying this, but I think the best options are one, two, and three. Um, see what we can do. I think spend our reserves funds is extremely dangerous. Um, I liken it to spending all your money in the second inning of a nine-inning game. We're, we're in the beginning of this. This is going to be years of pain. And to spend our reserves now, I think is dangerous. And again, I take no pleasure whatsoever in saying that. I'd also like to point out, Tom, your analysis was phenomenal. Um, but you, as you were talking, you, questions started to come to my head. And if I was at home watching, uh, if I had not been on the Finance Committee for as long as I was, if um I would have questions, I'd say, how are we in this position? And what's going on here? Uh, and I think it's really important to point out to the town, to the people in the town, our, our tax system. We have a single tax rate. Uh, we don't have a split tax rate. We lean on our residents to provide the, through property tax, to fund the wonderful town that Easton is. Other towns, all our surrounding towns, Mansfield, Foxborough, Stoke, Walpole, they have split tax rates. So uh the commercial, the commercial base in those towns pay more in taxes than the residents do. And it 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 lessens the burden to the residents, which allows them to operate in a, in an almost, dare I say, long-term financially better position than we are. Um, and that's not through any fault of of our town or through the Select Board or even previous Select Boards. Year, many, many years ago, we made a decision to preserve open space in this town. And in doing so, we eliminate the possibility to have to have businesses or larger industrial parks like you see in Mansfield or Foxborough. And so we didn't bring in business, so we didn't have, we didn't have a need to do a split tax. Uh, many years ago, we did not, we made the decision to not allow for sewer infrastructure to be built out. And I want to say it was in the seventies or eighties. Um, and the federal government would have paid for the majority of it. And we decided at that time that the idea of doing that would have moved Easton away from being um the the town it was. And so I I do think that 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 decision was not as forward-thinking as it could have been, um, because every other town did it. And when they did it, they provided an infrastructure for business to come in. Uh, and for bit, when business did come in, it allowed a split tax rate. And so it lessened the burden on the residents of those towns. Easton didn't do that. Um, not pointing fingers. I just want to explain the situation as to why we are where we are. And I think that's important to point out. Uh, but back to this slide that I'm seeing right now, uh, I might be the most unpopular person in this town right now, if I say this, but I think the preservation of our reserve funds is essential.
Donnie, could I weigh in on that?
Sure.
So I just want to add to that, and I think it's a really important point, because we are trying to connect a lot of different threads here. None of what any of us do is done in a vacuum, right? None of the decisions we make have no reparation effects. But I I do want to be clear for anyone who's watching, when we're talking about things like splitting tax rates, if they don't say, oh, okay, good, the solution is just split the tax rate.
Right.
Under Prop two and a half, which is state law, even if we were to split the tax rate tonight, which you couldn't, it's not on your agenda, but suspend disbelief in that regard. The total taxation we are allowed to collect would not change. So the total revenue would not change. It would just shift where it comes from proportionally. So I just want to make that clear, that if people look at that and say, oh, okay, well, we should shift to a split tax rate, tax the businesses more, that sounds good. It doesn't change anything without an override. So even if you wanted to say, okay, we want business to pay more, you would still need an override to increase the the total taxes you're allowed to collect. And then after that, you could switch around the tax rates if you so chose. So that's an an important detail there. If we split the rate right now, without an override, it still changes nothing.
If I can just clarify, so if we did have a split tax rate for over the past twenty or thirty years, operational overrides would have occurred more so that tax rate would have come up. And, you know, like to your point, it doesn't happen overnight. You can't flip a switch. The benefit of a split tax rate doesn't, doesn't come in immediately after a split tax rate happens. It takes years and sometimes decades to receive the benefits of a split tax rate, um, to your point.
Yes. And and further, even that is only one piece of the kind of policy puzzle. The, one of the main drivers, you make a very good point about our communities around us that have had more growth to what Tom was talking about. Having a split tax rate is part of that, but you also need an environment that encourages growth. And up until, the town of Easton had zero gallons of sewer treatment until two thousand thirteen. Communities around us started getting on in on that, so to speak, fifty years ago. So we are never going to fully escape the gravity of that policy choice. So splitting the rate is one piece. Uh, infrastructure development and zoning is another. We're working on infrastructure and zoning. We've aggressively invested in infrastructure through capital projects. Um, but yeah, you are correct. It it is a, that is one component. It takes many, 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 many years before this recession hit on, um, and it's, it's really sad, frankly. You know, Tom pointed out before the last recession, the best growth we had ever seen uh was just about a million dollars. And part of that was because of a switch to state law that kind of lumped in more than twelve months of growth. And the finance director's on this call, she'll tell me if I'm getting that wrong, but I believe that that's correct. Easton, after the recession, the two thousand and eight recession began investing in sewer uh significantly through grant funding and through Betterment's assess to people getting those, not just through general borrowing. Um, and rezoning, uh downtown rezoning Route one thirty-eight. Uh, up until the pandemic hit, we are going to be working on rezoning Five Corners, along with that sewer project. Uh, to have a hand-in-glove approach on changing land use policy with improving infrastructure, so people could do more and that it would generate that growth. And we were seeing some of the benefits of that um, as well as obviously the overall economic health. Uh, in the last three years, we did have the highest new growth we ever had. Um, over eight hundred thousand, over nine hundred thousand, and over a million. And that's not an accident. And that helps. Um, but it helps marginally. You're bringing in a million new tax dollars rather than five hundred thousand, but we're talking a budget of over eighty million. It helps. It it absolutely helps, and it helped make the past few budgets, as lean as they were, uh significantly less painful. Um, but new growth is also very, very, very closely tied to broader economic health. And so we should fully expect that we are not going to be hitting seven digits on that, um, again, uh, in the near future. So I just wanted to, to just add some of that, you know, there, uh, Mark. And I think on that note, two other things that, Donnie, I think, is it fair to say that although there are two discrete items, this is the discussion about the budget, right?
Right.
All right. So we have Article seven from a town meeting warrant is the next item on the agenda, but the budget's not balanced. So I'm not seeking an affirmative recommendation from the board at this time. So anyone who's watching this, who is kind of holding your questions to that, this is, this is the same conversation. Um, but on that note, Mark, about uh the legacy of policy choices and what it means for our ability today to balance a budget, obviously, the board has been uh on the receiving end of a letter campaign uh related to the prioritization of government services that asks some good kind of foundational questions about what uh what priorities are and why is it that certain departments are doing social service work and things like that. And much like, um, you cannot extract nineteen seventies sewer and open space policy from twenty twenty budgeting. We can't fully unpack or ourselves, particularly on one week's notice, solve and fundamentally change the legacy of uh the social safety net in the United States of uh a half-century of federal policy that has prioritized cutting tax rates and shifting uh funding priorities away from entitlement spending, which, you know, has been turned into a euphemism for government waste uh over the decades. And moving from entitlement spending for social services, uh for social safety net programs in the eighties and nineties into block grants distributed by the federal government to states that frequently then get chopped up into their own grants rather than direct entitlement spending to schools, to health centers, uh, to social service providers. Uh, there has been a conscious and deliberate policy push through bipartisan administrations on the national level to shift away from taxation and direct spending for social services and towards uh market-based solutions and um competitive grant programs. And it has resulted in a kind of patchwork social, social safety net. It has resulted in a closure of state mental health hospitals. It has resulted in fewer beds being available. And that has resulted in a uh unfortunate circumstance where in many communities, the first point of contact with government service providers is often uh police or fire, because you call nine one one when there's an emergency, and there was nothing preventative in the way prior to that. And so that ties into the questions you are being asked and the decisions that people are rightfully grappling with. But it's worth understanding that we, on the local level, have certain areas over which we exercise control, uh, some more immediate than others, uh, but that there's also uh lasting impacts on the way that we kind of carve up and deliver services, whether it's through a fire department or a police department or a health department or schools, uh, that frequently on our level, you know, in a federal government society, we're on the on the lowest, we're the small, we're the small kid on the block, right? We're municipal government. We can't deficit spend, and the problems end up here. And so people pitch in and departments do things that maybe they were not originally uh planning on doing uh in the past. Um, but it's, it's important that, you know, we we be mindful that much like nineteen seventies sewer policy is impacting our twenty twenty budgeting, you know, nineteen eighties tax policy uh and and the shifting focus to grants instead of entitlement funding also has a huge impact on what society looks like today down on our level as well.
Thanks, Connor. So tying back to the um, the letter that you referenced, this weekend, we got about twenty um letters from people in the community that were, it was a um standard letter. And the letter um had a lot in it, and I think that we probably have addressed many of the questions um right now. Um, there is a question in our Q and A from Hannah Toe on one forty-eight Randall Street. And she asks, how do you plan on prioritizing which departments to cut, if, which department budgets to cut if that was the decision taken? So I think, you know, you can see how we're struggling with this, but I, one of the things that's really important is that a budget does say what the community values are. And I think that we've been very clear that we do value education and we've contributed a lot to education. Um, as Connor has said over and over again for for years now, it, there's just not enough money to go across the board. So I think that um we, you know, really, the biggest ticket items that we have, most of our our spending is on salaries and benefits. And I think, you know, there, there's, that just means either jobs lost or services cut. So we're going to have to look at it across the board and see how we're going to be able to come up with that uh with that gap. And it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work and it's going to be very painful. Connor?
Yeah, um, so it's a good question uh from Hannah. Um, one of the things to go from the kind of conceptual level, um, you've done a nice job on down to the weeds on how do we actually prioritize uh operational budget decisions. Um, obviously, we review that. It's my job to review that with uh my department heads.
With towns department heads and make recommendations for board, the school committee and superintendent work together on school decisions. But to Dottie's point, you know, we basically have a bunch of human services departments. Most of our costs are personnel. And so saving money usually is through the elimination of personnel costs, which means eliminating jobs and therefore services, which is what we want to do the least. And so you do need to look at each budget where things may seem more simplistic at a big picture level and say, okay, well. You know, a public safety department has thirty some odd employees, just get rid of one, what's the impact? The impact is that you work still exists. And so if you need to thoughtfully analyze, okay, if we reduce a certain number of personnel total to work with. Are we going to then need to increase the overtime to cover that work? And if so, do you end up spending more money inadvertently to cover the same amount of work with fewer people? And in the process, exhaust folks, so you would look at things like that on a more granular level.
Can I ask you a hypothetical question? Or I I have a question. So as far as the police go, are there minimum staffing levels that there must be a certain amount of officers on the streets at any given time? Twenty four hours a day?
Yes.
So if there was a reduction in police officers in our department. And we didn't. If there was a reduction of police officers within our department, it wouldn't necessarily cost less. An officer would be ordered in on overtime to fill that slot so we can meet the mandated. Amount of officers on the streets in these twenty four seven, twenty four hour, seven day week shifts, or not shifts, but periods.
Correct, that frequently is what occurs and for anyone who's curious, it's not, we don't have fifteen officers. Strolling around, we have a minimum staffing of four for twenty five thousand people.
Four officers for a town of twenty five thousand?
That's the minimum staffing, yes.
And I think it's also important to note that we had an operational audit a few years ago. That not only looked at staffing levels over time, they looked at policies, procedures. And they came to the conclusion that we were very understaffed, but also understaffed in comparison to the communities around us. In our police force. And then the police have an accreditation, it's a voluntary accreditation that they do every three years. It's very time consuming and very demanding work. Where an independent organization comes in and evaluates again all of the policies, the procedures. And we've been accredited since two thousand nine or ten, I believe. And it's so so not only are we looking at things are, you know, from an organizational perspective. But and not just in the police, in all of our departments. We bring in outside services to review those periodically. And so we are, we're already understaffed. I don't see a way to bring that any further. We do have another question from Andrew Abramson from Flint Lane. With all due respect to police officers who put their lives on the line in the community, if over two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars must be cut. Why not cut it from departments that the community might be more willing to see cuts from right now, such as the police department? And then he also says in comments to what you guys just said, that makes sense. How many officers above the minimum requirement do we have?
So the first question as far as. Why not more from police? So. The police budget has already been reduced by nearly two hundred thousand from its initial request. And it is a, it's zero percent for next year, which is a deeply regressive budget already. That will reduce personnel. And, you know, I think it's it's worth touching on a few data points here. That Dottie alluded to that, you know, it is our responsibility to make sure that we are doing things. Not only adequately from a service level, but trying to be as efficiently doing so as we can because we do have these major revenue issues. And so when we had our department, the police department, along with other departments in town, looked at. By an external firm in two thousand and sixteen, they concluded that at that time, five years ago. That comparable departments in communities the size of Easton usually have significantly more police. And spend significantly more money than we do. So we're already operating from a position of having a much smaller police department. That spends less money. So I don't know if you can easily say that it's just a department the community wants to see cut. Ultimately, if that's what voters at town meeting want to pursue, they are free to attempt to persuade their neighbors to do so. In my professional judgment, I wouldn't recommend it because the department's already at a zero and I want to just cite a couple of statistics there. So we will have thirty six officers for a town of twenty five thousand people next year. Five years ago, the average Massachusetts department from a town of similar population. And economic makeup had forty point five. So we're going to be ten percent below typical staff levels already. Easton, out of all of our comparable communities, had the lowest number of police officers per thousand residents of any comparable department. So we have one point five officers per thousand residents roughly. In our comparable communities, that average is about one point eight. So if we were to staff that level, as I said, we'd be closer to forty and a half, we're at thirty six. If we were to staff to Massachusetts statewide average, which is two point two officers per thousand. We would have fifty one police officers, we we have thirty six. And, you know, on the topic of national police nationwide. The average, and this is seems shocking compared to what we are used to here, is two and a half officers per thousand. So with the Easton Police Department staffed at nationwide averages, we'd have fifty eight police. Again, we don't, we have thirty six. Because we have a small community police department. And that department already is smaller in personnel figures. And to Tom's point, we're already spending about thirty four percent fewer dollars per capita in that department. Than every town surrounding us. So it's already an incredibly lean department, we're already cutting two hundred thousand from the initial request for that department. And reducing personnel in that department. So that is why I would not necessarily look at the remaining two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And draw that line there and say that's a simple. Solution. So. And then as far as the other question, the minimum staffing. It, obviously, we've we've thirty six folks to work with, there are three eight hour shifts a day. And people are scheduled to work four days on, two days off, people have time off, they could get sick. So it's it's a rolling. Average of people who are working, some days it may be six, some days it may be four, it depends on if people use time. People may get called out of a community for a court matter, for training. So we, if if we drop below minimum, we would call someone in, which would cost overtime, which is time and a half, the normal base pay. To get to that four person shift minimum. So that's why, again, when you start reducing staff too quickly. Or if you do it kind of across the board without a well thought out implementation plan, you may end up spending more money, calling people back in on overtime. And and that's not desirable.
And, you know, I I think one of the things that was brought up in the letter and, you know, some of the national conversation right now is. You know, can social services take the place of of the police? And I think that over the years, we have looked to. To work complimentary and in fact, when we say public safety, we're not just talking about the police. We're talking about police, fire, and even DPW, which a lot of people don't realize their. You know, they're inputting their value to that triad of services. And there are a lot of services that the police do. So if you look at, you know, just numbers of statistics of this many crimes or, you know, the crimes aren't really that bad. They might just be domestic issues. You know, domestic issues are probably one of the most dangerous things for our police to go into. You never know what's going to happen there, they're very unpredictable. As far as drugs in our community, you know, it's been increasing just like it has in every other community. A few years ago, when Chief Sullivan first started. Wings of Hope approached him to talk about doing some collaborative work around education and awareness with our schools and our families and our parents. And Chief Sullivan, at the time, very still still short staffed, said, I don't know how we're going to be able to do this, but I'm going to make it work. And he worked with Wings of Hope to be able to provide those services for the police. Their job, as he explained it to me at the time, was if there's a drug overdose or a situation like that, the police go there and their job is to keep everyone safe. And, you know, be helpful until the fire department can come and transport somebody. But they didn't have a process to go back the next day or afterwards for any kind of follow up. And so when other communities were doing the the program to provide those services. Our our police chief personally spent hours and hours and hours of his time to work, to find a way so that Easton could provide those services. It took over a year dealing with lawyers of how can we do this, how can we do this properly? And he he worked through it with with the town for a year to make sure that we had those services available. So these are meaningful things to our police force that we that we do provide. There's a lot of work that the police do to provide support for our our seniors with the triad group. There's a lot of crime against seniors, as you know, you read it in the paper all the time, all these scams. And our police take that very seriously. The police, you know, they they work in a community policing type of a way. Which is where they really want to get connected with the citizens, they're at a lot of events, they're at a lot of children's events. And I think that we've actually been probably working ahead of this on the curve for years. By making those kinds of services and and decisions on our police force. So I want to thank them for all their work. At the same time, I really understand the passion and the frustration. When we read in the news that there's, you know, militarized police forces and we don't have that in Easton. In fact, one politician, they said to her, what do you think that the policing should look like? And she said it should look like the suburbs and that's because we really have that community policing model. So I feel like I hope I answered, I answered every email that came in. Some people had follow up questions and I answered those. And I really hope that we were able to at least bring some more information forward so people could understand. The process and what we're looking at and it is not easy to prioritize where money gets spent from, you know. So we're working hard to do that and we're working hard with the schools to do that. And we're going to have to figure it out one way or the other. So I really appreciate all the input and I appreciate the letters that we got. So with that. We have one more from Hannah, again, can you speak to crime in our personnel and spending in comparison with other towns? And I think we've already answered that. Do we have any other questions from anyone on the board?
I just think it's important. That that we support the police department. I have a great deal of respect and. Pride in our chief Gary Sullivan, our deputy chief. Keith Boone and the members of the of the police department. And I think that it's worth a conversation later on about the nine one nine one one calls. And where, how they get sent out from dispatch. And I think it's worth a conversation. And a thoughtful conversation with the entire community as opposed to just one, one small group of people who have a very strong opinion. I think that we need to have those conversations over the course of the the next six months or a year. And and I just want people to be clear that that there are a lot of folks that I've talked to who are very, very supportive of the police department in this town. And and Dottie's related to a number of things that they do for us over the over the course of their of their jobs, well beyond what. What is traditional policing. And I want to once again commend them for what they do. And I I think it's important that the community support them going forward and join us in the conversation about. Not only the the policing budget. But are the the issues that Tom brought up relative to the structural deficit. And I think it's important that we do that in a collaborative way without pitting one department against another.
Thank you Craig. Anyone else? Okay, I think we've covered the warrant. Do we need to vote on anything else on that Connor? Am I missing anything?
I, we have two articles left on a warrant the board has not voted on. We do have. Finance Director Nightingale has some information for supplemental fiscal year two thousand twenty budgets, I believe, right Wendy?
Yes.
But as I had stated before, unfortunately, the budget's not balanced yet. So it I I don't think it's appropriate for me to seek a recommendation on an unfinished product, so. No action on that at this time. Wendy, do you want to specify the fiscal twenty items?
Yes. So there's there's three departments that need supplemental funding, the first one is the town clerk. That's eight thousand eight hundred dollars and that is a result of the additional elections that we've had this year. The other item is other general government. There is a small transfer, three thousand eighty five dollars. Currently, the Bristol County Agricultural High School assessment is included in that budget for fiscal twenty one. We moved that out and grouped it with the regional school, Southeastern Regional. But in this case, it's in that budget and we had budgeted eighty five hundred for the assessment, it came in at eleven thousand five eighty five. That department's kind of a a small budget and there isn't a lot of. Other line items that that can readily absorb that overage. And then the third one is solid waste and recycling enterprise, that's fifty thousand dollars. That is. The funding for that will come from solid waste and recycling surplus. And the reason for the fifty thousand dollars is the recycling costs this year. Have just been really, really significant. And we're going to need additional funds for that. It's, we might not even need the whole fifty thousand if we don't use it, it's just going to close back into the surplus that gets certified as of July first. But I think fifty thousand dollars will cover it, we still have the June bill. The April bill was like one of the highest bills we've seen this year, probably as a result of, you know, more people being home. People cleaning out their garages and their homes, getting rid of a lot of trash. But just in case we that trend continues for the for the remainder of the fiscal year, fifty thousand should be sufficient. So that total is sixty one thousand eight eighty five, of which fifty thousand would come from solid waste and recycling surplus. And eleven thousand eight eighty five would come from a transfer from other available funds. At the finance committee meeting on Wednesday. I had alluded to that, that we probably seek funding. From the reserve fund transfer line item. The finance committee reserve funds in the general fund. And that could be a funding source to cover those two departmental budgets.
So are you looking for a motion to recommend or is that, do we want to keep that open until the night of town meeting or?
That, that's, that's up to you. I'm not anticipating that there's going to be any other budgets that that need funding for town meeting. So I'm anticipating that this will be it.
Okay.
And Dottie, can I just clarify if folks are watching this from the last discussion? This is for the current fiscal year, what we're talking about particularly of trash, which is the fifty thousand dollar one, that's an enterprise fund. We're not funding that out of tax revenue that we use for department budgets like schools or police. But that's from user fees for people who sign up for that program and pay a fee for it. So I just want to make that distinction on the revenue clear. And then when we talk about the finance committee reserve, that is a small, I think typically it's sixty thousand dollar account. Finance committee has oversight over, we're not talking about the town's general reserves.
Okay.
I would ask if the board's willing to take a a vote to recommend the supplemental budgets for fiscal twenty as described by the finance director.
Someone like to make a motion.
Moved Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Bussard.
Craig and Tom, roll call vote Craig.
Barger, yes.
Bussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Terrific. And we'll wait until the night of town meeting for. Full genetti, yes. Terrific. And we'll wait until the night of town meeting for, um, the operating budget vote. So that won't be printed in the warrant. Um, next, I'm going to skip to acceptance of the minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes of June eighth?
So moved.
Second, Tom Broussard.
Tom made the motion or the second?
Uh, I did the second. I did the motion.
Oh, Craig, I'm sorry, uh, Mark and then Tom. Um, and then all in favor, if starting with Craig?
Barger, yes. Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full genetti, yes. So Connor, uh, do you have any, um, town administrator notes or any, anything happened since the last meeting that we need to know about?
Not that we have not been discussing, uh, at length.
Okay, great. Uh, any other select board notes?
Uh, Dottie, I would just like to make two comments. One, I had the opportunity to, uh, actually go to a restaurant, uh, McGuire's that was referenced earlier in today's call, uh, by Michael Blanchard. And I just wanted to pass along, uh, the owner's intent. Neil, um, specifically, uh, mentioned with great appreciation the efforts that our teams put forth at town hall in the effort to enable them to open up at least that part of their business. Uh, and it was just incredibly, I, I wish I could convey the genuine warmth and appreciation that he made. Um, and so I, I equally express that, uh, and I'm so grateful for so many people coming together to make this, uh, economic opportunity available. Um, and secondly, I just want to express appreciation, uh, sincerely for all of the community engagement, all of the letters that we received, the questions that were asked, um, and the provoking discussion that it has created. Um, I'm confident, uh, in our response. I'm confident in the, uh, allocation of Easton's resources and how we spend our money, um, and like Craig, support the incredible efforts that our public service departments provide. Um, and I just want to make sure we continue the dialogue. I welcome the dialogue and I encourage the dialogue because I think there has to be a lot more of it to help our community play its role in both how the state and the nation responds uh, to the obvious questions and challenges that we are facing regarding racism, um, and all the other challenges that are before us also associated with the pandemic. And so, uh, I just welcome it. I, I appreciate it. And I think it's through this type of constructive, working together, not divisive discussion that we'll be able to get to the best place possible and be the best version of our community that we can be. Um, and so I appreciate that.
Great. Anyone else? Craig?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I had the occasion, um, at Sabbath services at Temple High Shalom on Friday night last to have the opportunity to, to have a presentation, um, by folks from the Raising Multicultural Kids, Kelly Lamb and Cheryl Sklar, and two, um, students, um, from the community about, um, the Black Lives Movement. Um, and I was, um, very pleased with the presentation. I, I learned a great deal. Um, I will ask the, the hard questions going forward. And it was, uh, the group that, uh, at Temple High Shalom was very supportive, uh, of that. And, and, um, I, I've always been very, um, impressed by, by, by Kelly, uh, and her, and her presentation and the, the program that she's put together. But the fact that she brought in three people, two of whom are directly impacted by the, by the Black Lives Movement, um, was, was impressive. And, and, and I thank them all for, for being there.
Thanks, Craig. Chuck, anything?
No, I'm good.
Mark?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, um, talk about the letter campaign, just real quick. Uh, all those, all those people who came together, I've read, I read all, well, I read the letter from all the different people who put it out there. And it comes from a place of passion and a desire for change. Um, and I think their heart is in the right place. I think their intentions are good. And I think the conversation absolutely needs to continue so we can work together to show them a path or, or somehow come together on what it is that they want to achieve. Um, I do believe that the resources being spent in this town are being spent appropriately within their various departments. Um, I do believe that the Eastern Police does an exceptional job. I don't, I don't think that the Eastern Police is, it's fair to compare Eastern Police to a police force of thousands of people with endless resources. Uh, we're a community of twenty-five thousand people with thirty-six officers. And if there is question of policy, let's continue the discussion and talk about policy. Um, let's talk about how these departments work together. Let's talk about what it is that you want to achieve and, and find a path to get there. Um, I don't think that disrupting the police budget by ten percent one week before town meeting or at town meeting is the prudent path. I don't even think it'll achieve what, what they, they, what this letter campaign desires. Um, but I want to open the door for further conversations, further discussion, uh, and I want to understand. I, I, I know, I can see how they feel, but I want to know more. Um, so let's continue the conversation.
I think that's an excellent point, Mark. And, you know, I think that after town meeting's over and everybody catches, hopefully, a little bit of rest, a little bit of a breather from this, maybe we can look for a way to work with the Human Rights Commission and some of the stakeholders in town to have just informal community conversations where people can feel that they can speak freely. Um, and, and we can really sit down and discuss some of these issues, uh, roll up our sleeves and, and talk about it. And I think, you know, communication is so important on everything that we do. And you're right. I think that, um, I'm really excited to see that there's people that are asking questions and, and that really are passionate about these things. We should be. We should all be. So we'll try to find a way to make that happen in a way that makes sense, um, so that everybody can feel like they're being included. Um, based on that, I just want to kind of transition into, into something. I think pretty much most of the people in town know that in the past week, there was an incident, um, of alleged racism. And our Human Rights Committee, uh, was involved in it. We have a civil rights officer, which just to throw in a plug on that, we're one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to ever have a civil rights officer. And, um, and they spoke with the, they worked with the family. Um, the leaders of Raising Multicultural Kids worked with the family. And Mark, Mark Lamb personally went out and sat with that family and listened to them and supported them on behalf of our board. And I just, I just want to say that I think that a lot of people don't realize that the select board does a lot of things in the community that you don't see and making those personal connections. And sitting with people when they're in a time of trouble and support and literally holding their hand and, and maybe even crying with them. It's, you know, I'm not trying to be dramatic of this, but it's so important that, um, people know that it's more than these board meetings. So I just really want to thank you, Mark, for being a true leader and, uh, and being very helpful in that situation.
Well done, Mark.
Yeah, well done, Mark.
Thank you.
So to, so to, to go on to, um, some better, some more positive subjects, uh, just a reminder that town meeting is next Monday, June twenty-second, seven PM at the Ames Sports Complex, um, at Stone Hill College. Remember to bring your mask. Um, and also there's an election, the local election is coming up, voting on June twenty-seventh from ten AM to four PM at Oliver Ames High School. Um, those are, those are local town positions. And if you can do a mail-in vote, um, do that. Otherwise, um, please, we hope to, we hope that this year especially, they're all important, but we want to make sure that everybody is voting. And last but not least, I would just like to remind everybody that this weekend is Father's Day. So, uh, I want to say thank you to all the fathers out there, including everyone on this screen here. And, uh, thank my own husband and father. And I hope everyone is able to take some family time to enjoy, um, the weekend. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
Craig and Tom and a rule call vote.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great week. We'll see you next Monday.
Good day.
Bye, everyone.